This is beat on. Yes, guys. Be good, isn't it?
Yeah, damn. I'll tell them.
Oh, yeah. I, I just haven't given enough time on yet.
It says six twenty-nine on mine.
Thank you. Good. How are you there? How's that puppy?
Recording in progress.
Call to order, call to order, the regular meeting, Maria Dale City Council. Roll call, please. Mayor Garance here. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Woodall.
Here.
City manager Knox.
Here.
Chief of Police Connor.
Here.
Finance Director Jillingham. Committee Development Director Caldwell. Water Superintendent Jensen. Waste Water Superintendent Taylor.
Here.
Management Analyst Sampor. And Mary Clark.
Here.
Please stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every truth and justice for all. Public presentation. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter that's on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph Stone Brown Act. Items requiring council actions not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration as the council directs unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Supervisor, push down. I talked over your phone. Well, welcome. Are there any hands raised or emails submitted? No hands raised? Then I will close public presentations and move to the consent calendar. Is there anyone who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
I don't know.
What else? Any hands raised or emails to remove an item? Then I will ask a motion to approve items one, two, three, and, no, one, two, three, five, and six of the consent calendar. You have a motion in there, second? Second. You have a motion in the second?
It's wrong, but.
Are you in?
I'm in.
Motion carries five zero. Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, so I remember four is the, uh, from the abatement on this address.
Twenty.
Twenty, this way. Is there, is there a landlord that is sitting under, is there a landlord that gets credit for this piece of property?
Property belongs to Stewart Cox.
Do?
Stewart Cox.
Stewart Cox, I just like to have that noted publicly for the record. This is a comment that's a shame that this city has to go through this process. This is the second time it's done. I read this right. And they have, they may know effort to pay the first abatement.
From Mr. Cox?
On this.
This is the first abatement on the property, the third three, second cap.
Well, it says that they have, they know what to do.
So, and they know effort to pay the, the cost of the abatement that was done. So when they don't pay for the abatement, then we go through the process to put a lien on the property. And this is the first step in that process.
Okay. The complication for me. So, yeah, that's all, that's all I have. There's always problems. That responsibility.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a question regarding that issue? And is there a motion?
There's a motion to accept.
We have a motion for, to accept item four of the consent calendar. Is there a second? Second. Motion carries five zero. Reports of staff communication, city manager, page thirty-four in our packet.
Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. So regarding the website, the staff did meet with a vendor today to discuss some additional add-ons to the website, including some changes to the agenda management system that should be a little bit more user-friendly and also allow any working wishes to move to a paperless agenda format. So I'm excited about that and looking out to continue to work on updating the website. I will say that the, the current website is a little bit more functional than it was last week. And so a lot of the information, and again, the bill base system and whatnot are, are back active on the website. Street sweeping was conducted back on, for this last Friday, July fifteenth. The original date for the eighth had to be scrubbed due to a technical issue with the equipment. For those who are curious down at the city parking lot, the George Gertain sign has been missing for several months. It's actually been taken down for rehab. Should be completed according to the, uh, the folks at the Blue Box sometime this week. And the city will also be participating in the 2022 Humble County Trail Summit to provide information about the Eagle River Trail funded through Clean California. The governor's new program. The event is on Saturday, September twenty-fourth, from nine AM to noon at the Sequoia Conference Center. If any of the council members would like to volunteer at the event, will let us know and we will help arrange that. With that, I will go ahead and return to the mayor and see if there's any questions or comments.
Thanks, city manager. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Garance. So kind of, is there a date for the Sealy Seale project?
My understanding is the dates are always a little bit fluid on these types of projects, but it would be done in September. We will be last on the list, so they're going to be hitting up the Arcata area, University first, and then working their way south into Fortuna and Riedel last, which actually works out best for us, so.
Thank you. That's my one question.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
No, I was just going to say that I'm glad that the sign has been replaced, that I've been recently asked about it, so this is a good, good day. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
No questions, but I want to go to the trail summit. Put my name on that list. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, I just have one question on the webpage. So when you say paperless agenda, the people will be, if they, is that like if they sign up, they will send the agenda?
Yeah, you should be able to have a little bit more of a functional document when you look at the whole, uh, the full document. You should be able to use the agenda front pages to then navigate directly to the documents, to the agenda items themselves.
Thanks.
No, can you have a question? No. Are there any hands raised or emails? Thank you. We will then move on to special call items. Public hearing approved, findings with order confirming accounts and assessments for the abatement of sixty-six Davis Street, page forty-three in our packets.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. This is a public hearing to establish cost recovery for the abatement that was done in sixty-six Davis Street. Our recommendation is that you open a public hearing, receive any testimony that's available, close the public meeting, discuss the matter, and approve the findings in order confirming the council assessment for the abatement of sixty-six Davis Street. And CSO Mayor Carter is here to provide oral testimony on the case.
Thank you. Do you want to speak or do you want to question the panel?
We'll go to questions first.
Okay. Councilmember Woodall? No questions. Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
No questions.
Councilmember Carter? No question. Mayor Pro Tim?
No questions.
And no questions, so. Oh, well, I actually have a question, just to make sure. Well, this is considered a hearing and a meeting?
This is the second step, so I, this is approved, then a meeting can be placed.
Are there any hands raised? Any emails? No questions? And I will call for a motion to approve the findings in order confirming accounts and assessment for the abatement of sixty-six Davis Street. Same here. You have a motion and a second. Motion carries five zero. Public hearing approved the findings in order confirming accounts and assessment for the abatement of five twenty-first Avenue, page forty-three in our packets.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. This is a public hearing to establish the cost recovery for the abatement that was done at five twenty-first Avenue. Our recommendation is that you open the public hearing, receive any testimony or evidence concerning the cost of the cost recovery or the cost of the abatement. Close the public meeting, discuss the matter if necessary, and approve the findings in order confirming the council assessment for the abatement of five twenty-first Avenue. And once again, CSO Mayor Carter is here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
We have a, we have a. Hi, Mr.
You, Councilmember Carter?
No questions.
Mayor Pro Tim?
No questions, Mayor.
Councilmember Woodall?
No. No questions.
Thank you. Hands raised? Emails? Questions? We're all good. Okay. And I'm asking for a motion to approve the findings with order confirming accounts and assessments for the abatement of five twenty-first Avenue. So moves. We have a motion in there, second? I'll second. You have a motion in the second? Motion carries five zero. We belong to ordinances and special resolutions. Introduction and first reading by Title Ali of ordinance three nine five dash two zero two two, organic reduction and recycling, page fifty in our packets. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garance and members of the council. So this item, you'll receive a short presentation from staff. You'll open the public hearing, take any questions, provide any comments to staff, and then continue this reading of the ordinance to August sixteenth. Your meeting of August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, for the formal presentation and adoption of the ordinance. So there is no action, consequential action from this particular agenda item. So ordinance number three ninety-five dash twenty twenty-two is related to Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, which was signed by Governor Brown on September nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, with the final regulation text adopted by Cal Recycle in November of twenty twenty. And jurisdictions are required to begin implementing SB thirteen eighty-three this year. So the legislation targets statewide emissions reductions for industry sources of essentially methane, fluorinated gases, and other climate-related contaminants. So methane being the primary one, methane has been identified by the state as a major contributor to climate change, and therefore the state has targeted SB thirteen eighty-three as, as a method to help reduce its impact, certainly by diverting additional material out of the landfills similar to recyclative glass, metal, aluminum. You're also freeing up landfill space, so accomplishing another objective of the state. So the Humble County Solid Waste Local Task Force is comprised of representatives from all of the cities of the county with administrative support provided by Humble Waste Management Authority. The local task force in conjunction with HWMA has retained a consultant to develop a regional thirteen eighty-three action plan for all of its municipal jurisdictions, including Riedel. So HWMA contracted with Edgar Associates back in December twenty-one to provide consulting services to coordinate on the overall SB thirteen eighty-three issues. So the city of Riedel is eligible for a waiver from some of the main tenants of SB thirteen eighty-three. Last year, the city filed for a waiver and received a waiver. An approved waiver is for the collection. It is for the collection-related activities and does not waive a jurisdiction for other obligations to comply with SB thirteen eighty-three. So, for example, the city, even though we do have a waiver from the main collection requirements, we do not have, for collection and processing, we do not have waivers for some of the other program requirements, including education and outreach being the primary, as well as some edible food recovery items in the legislation. So the attached ordinance itself is also a requirement of SB thirteen eighty-three and has been modified from the state's model ordinance to account for Riedel's waived requirements. So a very similar ordinance has been recently adopted in the city of Riedel. So why do we need to do this? SB thirteen eighty-three is state law, and the city of Riedel is a political subdivision of the state of California, is required to also enforce it, enforce these rules and regulations insofar as they apply to us. If we do not comply with SB thirteen eighty-three, the city is potentially exposed to fines down the road. That could be quite substantial. So we're responsible for implementing SB thirteen eighty-three here in Riedel. Part of what the Solid Waste Local Task Force has done is to really recognize that there needs to be a regional approach, coordinated effort to, to meet all of the requirements of this organics waste system, including disposal options, which currently there are no options available in Humble County. So again, we are required to do this. There are penalties for non-compliance, and we want to avoid those because that just ultimately leads to higher costs in solid waste builds. The good news is that Riedel has the waiver for now, so we are exempt from certain collection and processing requirements, and that's really the cornerstone, that's the bulk of the requirement. So that includes, uh, route surveys and a three-seater collection system essentially across the board through the community. Other good news, Riedel is already a member of Humble Waste Management Authority. We are a founding member of Humble Waste Management Authority. We have active partnerships with all of our fellow agencies within HWMA. So we're able to leverage some of the leadership that, in this issue, shown by Eureka and Arcata, that, uh, that comes and benefits the city. The other nice thing is that Riedel lacks major organic food waste generators. So while there are certain requirements in terms of edible food recovery, the city does not have, as far as staff can determine, any tier-one creators of organic waste. There is a school, which is a tier-two producer, but that regulation falls under the, under the state specifically, so it's a state facility. So the good news is that there is not a whole lot to enforce here. Our, our main producers and generators of organic waste continue to be residential uses and our requirement currently under the law is to essentially provide education to all of the generators, generator businesses. And our obligation is to also coordinate with our regional partners, the county, the other six cities, to help address some of the long-term obstacles to creating a organics waste processing system, ideally here in Humble County, because it costs a lot of money to truck that sort of waste out of Humble County. So, uh, so with that, that's just the basic overview of it. And happy to take any questions, and we'll try to provide additional answers at the meeting on August twenty-second.
Sixty.
Or sixty, sixty. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you. Um, first, just a comment. I do think education and outreach on this should start right away. People don't know what this is. Even my friends in bigger cities in California, I ask them, oh, they say, what are you talking? Nobody knows what this is. So I, I do think that's a summon process. Next, page fifty-two of our packets, page two of this document, item D, mentions a specified threshold amount of solid waste recycling and organic waste per week for your businesses, multifamily garden. How is that decided? And like, does that mean that every different household has a different amount of waste? And that's somehow figured out in advance?
So I, I think that falls under the legislation. They, they set these targets, fifty percent reductions, and ultimately up to seventy-five percent. So it's similar to recycling, where we're expected to meet diversion targets out of the waste stream to landfills.
Out of the city, though? Like, this isn't our job to go door-to-door and ask everybody how much trash they produce and how much.
No. You know, ultimately, the, the targets are, are going to be major organic waste producers. So right now, so for example, I think the closest that we really get to that is CC Market. However, the regulations state that the facility has to be ten thousand square feet or larger, so it's less than that. So, so we don't have to go in and do the enforcement on the individual.
Okay.
Businesses.
Next to my last question is page seventy-one of our packets, page twenty-one of the document, the model water efficiency landscaping ordinance requirements. Does this, is mulching and using compost that I generated in my house, like, that needs to go in my garden?
Yeah, so part of this is also because the state is now going with these, with these regulations, they're creating a new product, essentially, in use on the back end consumers. And so the, part of the idea is, is that, uh, is that there'd be requirements regarding lands, new landscape and stuff.
New landscape, okay. I have a million other, many questions that I can, I'm talking about later, because, yeah. Anyway, um, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall? No questions. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
No questions. Mine were answered by the city manager.
Same for you. And Councilmember Wilson?
I'll, I'll take this opportunity rather than do it at the end, the council reports. This is a big thing with HWMA's radar deal. We have a, our normal meeting last Thursday, which in turn we, we wanted to have a special meeting yesterday because they're going to close the, um, the recycling center on Hawthorne Street, where people bring in their recycling, stuff like refrigerated mattresses, they bring in, just other recycling materials they can take to there. Yeah, that is slated to take place, that they're closing on the first of August, in order to take that facility, which is, I think, in the range of twenty thousand square feet, and turn it into a, a pre-sort area for the thirteen eighty-three. And, no, they don't have a place to really take it. They're going to have to get bids to have it all out of the area until they find a place within the county to use it themselves. And they believe, they have, they, they employ, as city manager mentioned, this, that, and associates is a consultant firm that's here that works specifically, specifically with this. They're trying to get this thing rolling in small steps, so we're not waiting till the last minute. They said you may have to be active in this January two thousand twenty-three. We were, the reason for the special meeting was, we were told on Thursday that the recology won't be able to get the trucks that they need to gather up this waste for two years because there's just a lag time. They, they come and told us, similarly, that to do universal collection is going to take eighteen months to two years to get these trucks. So that pushes us up to two thousand, twenty-four, twenty-five. And as, and you said, the jurisdictions are responsible individually. It isn't just the counties. It's, we're responsible, those fines that he talks about could be in to make sure ten thousand dollars a day. We, you know, make an effort. Now, we're showing an effort, and I know by what Kyle was talking about, what the HWMA is doing as a county, because they, we, we're doing everything within our power to, to try to make this happen. The, one of the goals of discussing this is that there's, they're, their white farms go in out here at Somala, with this big fish farm, which is huge. It'll consume, I believe, twenty-five percent of power, additional power that Humble County uses. This is power, one hundred fifty jobs, potentially. And they also generate this waste that can be tied into, there's some people down in Riedel wanting to create a, this compost that they could use commercially as well. And so there's, the idea, the ideal goal is to keep it in the county, and, but they, that also takes a site to process. So there's, there's lots of stuff going on, and it's, it's finally got some movement. I think city manager presented more in his presentation than I've gotten a lot of times out of going to HWMA, sent through some really poor presentations about what this thing's doing, what, but it's a serious, so very serious, but it also costs the HWMA probably to, to, since they have the recycling center, they gotta go, they gotta go find another recycling center to take their stuff to, for the, the people that don't, like, we're, we're golden because we've got a recycling, recology of ten miles. So if we want to get rid of an old refrigerator, old bathrooms, old tire, we can go run it up to. They don't have to take it, Bigland, Eureka, Tindall, Arcata, they don't have that luxury of having a good place to take it. And so all this stuff's a work in progress, and I commend the city and the fact that your department is supporting you, and you're taking steps to show that we're doing diligence to, to, to be, you know, we got to find a waiver. We still will also, probably, probably the universal collection, there'll probably be a, a, a bin sort of way to, you go out and put, uh, put your stuff in that bin along with your, your recycling waste or your, so it's only solid waste. And, and this just sounds like, like, now they're proposing, we got to put it in a plastic bag, throw it in the green waste bin, then they're going to take that green waste, then they're going to dump that in. All that stuff, the trucks, trucks are going to take it down. They said they may talk, they're going to throw it down on the ground, and one person was there for a director at C, at State Farm. Said he, he, he had applied to be the executive director prior to the gentleman that's there. He, he literally went out and hit waivers, and you, because you're, you're getting this food coming in, it's got paper products, it's got forks and plastic utensils in it, and it's, you know, probably got batteries. Who knows what people will throw into it? That's where education comes in, is that, that you got to get this straight. And despite the, uh, the major requirement of cities and jurisdictions to do this, we're still facing, you also do say, there, there's a. the news, there's a T wave going across the world right now that's not typical. There's still things, Britain's sudden new temperatures. This is crazy. The late meat is just about not existent. They find this stuff, they find bodies, barrels that were dumped there decades ago. For the second, and, and, but there's always this, the electric system, the battery, or the ore, we said that this year. You go up on the clouds, salmon, this is just about not existent to be able to rehabilitate. So the stuff that, if we can fix it, we need to be starting to do stuff. And that affects everybody in the business. Whether you, if you buy a hotel, you buy a new TV, you got to do it all. So what are you going to do? What are you going to do with a refrigerator? If you're going to buy something new, you just, you, you, you got to be responsible by it, get rid of it. And this organic thing, the food waste, methane is, they tell us that eighty-four times this potent has CO2. So when you put organic waste into a landfill in terms of methane, you have a huge methane greenhouse gas that compared to just salt branches. Sorry, I spoke enough, but that's, this is the one on HSA may, this is what I'm actually doing, major things are targeted. They don't get a five-year waiver. They're, they've been working for several years. Anyway, that's all for you to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for that update of HSA may, too. That's a closing, that's kind of serious for that.
Well, they're not, they're not closing, but they're closing up the recycling. They're trying to find another place to take it, which costs minutes. They will cost.
And Senator Cruz County, that was some time ago, recently though, but Sacramento County, you see these trucks, big trucks with all these little bins on the back. It's classic. Oh, I don't know. They look classic. On the back that are now going to be kitchen countertop organic waste recyclers. I mean, and they're, they're passing them out to the residents. And I mean, the trucks just loaded with them, stacked, stack upon stack. And that's one of the ways they're dealing with the residents, residences in bigger cities in the moment. So do we need a motion to continue the reading?
Yes.
Is there a motion to accept the re, the first reading and continue to the second reading to office 16 for ordinance number 395-2022? Same move. I'm sorry. Are there any hand raised or emails, questions? Okay. Now, all right, maybe, okay. Is there a second?
Hold on.
We have a motion and a second? Motion carries five, zero. Thank you. And now we'll move on to council report and communications. Mayor Pro Tem?
No, we're not being reported on.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
I just wanted to thank the task force department, Jeff, our paperwork, and Main Street looking very nice to make really get that up. And then I just wanted to mention that the Wannas Club has put over at Dollar General a little library, three library, or that. And that's very nice. It's nice that Dollar General let them do that on their property. This is less likely to get. And then the other thing was mural up on one facing Main Street. They're both nice, but the one facing Main Street, I wanted to say that they have Jack Thompson as one of them, and he was very recognizable. And it's so nice that they put him on it because he has done so much for this city for the years, for a long time right here. I mean, even when he wasn't an elected official, he did a lot. So it was nice to see that he was up there. And nuisance abatement, meeting tomorrow at 3:00.
Thank you. And that's all. Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
The nuisance meeting tomorrow at 3:00, if anybody's listening, wants to come in, we'll be here. Lastly, I wanted to thank Councilmember Woodall because these flowers along Main Street look really, really nice. And I have seen you out there on some of the hot days watering and just easy going to take care of them. It really elevates the city's look.
It really does.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
It's great vision.
Thank you. That's it for.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Hi, Mr. Wilson.
Okay, and I have, I went to a seismic commission meeting in Sacramento, and I met Mark Gillarducci, and he's the Director of Officer Emergency Services. And he was very, very happy that someone from Ria Della was on the seismic commission. He was very happy that Ria Della was being rep, out there representing. As he said, he and his family have great ties to this town, to Ria Della. So anyway, just like, and that is it for me. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Same move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned until Tuesday on the black.
We have to vote.